I will call the Cookeville City Council meeting for Thursday, May 2nd to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilman Baji?
Here.
Councilman Walker?
Here.
Mayor Wheaton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eldridge?
Here.
Councilman Gilbert?
Here.
Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Pastor Stephen Thornton of Kenny Fork Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the beautiful day that you've given us and the opportunity to be able to live another day and experience your presence and to be able to minister to one another. And Father, I just pray for the city of Cookeville tonight and pray for its leadership and pray that you'll give them divine direction as decisions are made continually and not only tonight but throughout the year. And Father, we're just thankful for an opportunity to be able to serve one another. And Father, I pray that your favor will be upon this gathering tonight and the blessings and with the decisions that will be made. And may your favor continue, for it's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Thornton.
Thank you.
Item three, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes.
Do I have a motion?
Moved approved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council? Go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Four A, consider reappointments to the Putnam County Library Board. Mr. Mills?
May council members, the terms of service for Daniel Rader IV and Andrew Benkley as city representatives on the Putnam County Library Board of Trustees expire in June. The city council appoints three of the seven members of the board and members serve three year terms. Both Mr. Rader and Mr. Benkley have agreed to serve another term and Ms. Catherine Weisenger, Director of the Library, has requested a reappointment and I recommend for the reappointment of Mr. Rader and Mr. Benkley.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Moved approved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the council?
I just appreciate everybody being willing to serve City of Cookeville on that board and all the years of service put in.
Appreciate the opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Five A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on April 18th, 2024. Is there a motion?
Some moves.
Motion made by Councilman Walker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from council? Take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. On the consent agenda, six A, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240406. Request to close, abandon, and declare surplus property, a portion of an undeveloped right-of-way for Park Street located off North Willow Avenue. Six B, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240407 to rezone property at 1331 South Maple Avenue, tax map 066 parcel 104.00, from RS 10 Single Family Residential to RS 7.5 Single Family Residential. Six C, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240408 to rezone property located at State Street and Bobby Avenue, tax map 053-P, Group A parcel 026.00, from RS 10 Single Family Residential to CR. Six D, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240411 to rezone the Dogwood Park area, tax map 053G, Group C parcel 00.004.00, 006.00, 007.01, oh my goodness, 008.00, 01, 00, 011.00, 014.00, 015.00, and a portion of 004.01 in tax map 053-F, Group F parcel 001.00, from CL Local Commercial to CBD Central Business District. Six E, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240409 to establish zoning in the Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area as CR. Six F, set a date, 6/6/24 for a public hearing on ordinance O-240410 to establish zoning in the Nelson North Drive Annexation Area as ARM 8. Six G, consider awarding bids for uniforms, vest carrier systems, molly carry, body armor and badges. Six H, consider declaring a surplus vehicles, vehicle accessories and equipment. Six I, consider awarding a bid for one 2500 KVA pad transformer. And six J, consider declaring a surplus, one lot of copper tubing. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Good job.
Woo!
That was a big one.
Yeah.
Big meeting next time.
Yes.
Second, second that motion.
Got a motion from Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the council?
Can some of the zeros be removed?
Oh, please, please, yes.
Proceeding with all that.
I would appreciate that. Uh, yeah, we'll work on that next time. Anything else? Okay, go ahead and vote on the consent agenda.
All votes correct.
Dan?
Five yes motion carries.
Now you tell me. Okay. All right, into new business. Seven A, consider approval and authorization, authorizing the city manager to execute amendment number one for right-of-way acquisition services for engineering firm with Kimley Horn for the South Willow Avenue SR 135 West Jackson Street Intersection Improvement Project. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and I apologize for the parcel numbers there.
No, Chad tells I didn't have to sell the zeros.
Um, I'm seeking council authorization and approval for the city manager to execute amendment one with engineering firm Kimley Horn for right-of-way acquisition services for the South Willow Avenue West Jackson Street Intersection Improvement Project. The project would provide dual northbound left turn lanes on South Willow Avenue and add a dedicated westbound right turn lane on West Jackson Street. The initial PE design contract was for $218,614.39. Amendment number one adds right-of-way acquisition services for an additional $107,369.35, bringing the new budget for PE design to $325,983.74. This project is being funded through a TDOT Surface Transportation Block Grant funds. I respectfully ask your approval and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilman Walker, seconded by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
Um, just taking us a little while to get into this one. I guess it's mostly the state of Tennessee's project.
It's mostly on a state route. You know, this project has, uh, the STBG funding that was approved initially, it's an 80/20, it's a federal program, it's funded typically 80% by local dollar, 80% by federal dollars, 20% by local dollars. Since this is primarily on a state route, the state was covering the 20%. We also submitted this project for the statewide partnership program, which it was included in the TDOT tenure plan to receive those funds, but we haven't had, we haven't gotten any updates relative to that. But this should get the right-of-way acquisition process underway as soon as the contract's executed.
So as soon as the funding's made available from the state, we can kind of move forward?
Well, you know, we're waiting to see how the SPP funding impacts this because obviously we know we're going to be over budget based on, you know, a project that was initiated in 2018.
You know, we did receive a significant amount of right-of-way on Jackson Street. It's already been dedicated for this project to do the widening there from the property owners at that time. That was seven or eight years ago, I guess, so we've been working on this for many, many years.
Any more discussion with council? Okay, we'll go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval and authorize the city manager to execute contract with engineering firm Reagan Smith for Phase Two of the East Spring Street Multimodal Grant Sidewalk Project. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm seeking council approval to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with engineering firm Reagan Smith for Phase Two of the East Spring Street Sidewalk Improvement Project. Phase one of the project consists of approximately 2,000, 2,236 linear feet and constructed, this phase of the project consists of approximately 2,236 linear feet and would construct sidewalks from the terminus of Phase One at Rader Drive to the western entrance of the old armory and also install sidewalks along Carlin Drive to Avery Trace Middle School and the Putnam County Community Center. The contract scope includes NEPA reevaluation, plans revisions, construction bidding phase, and other deliverables for a lump sum fee of $52,000. This project is funded through a TDOT Multimodal Access Grant. We'll note, Mr. Dan Rader had recommended revisions to the contract relative to insurance, limitation of liability, payment terms, lien rights, and dispute resolution mediation. Those revisions have been accepted by Reagan Smith. This, that was revisions made to this page, so that's been changed from what was in your packets. But this would hopefully get this contract, this project underway this calendar year. We'd hope to bid this this calendar year and get this moving, so I respectfully ask for your approval. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, go ahead and vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven C, consider resolution R-240409, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city by owner consent and approving a plan of service for Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area located off Tennessee Avenue, further identified as tax, as a portion of tax map 55 parcel 108.05. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. The Planning Commission has reviewed and made a recommendation on an annexation by owner's consent request and plan of services for the Putnam County Fairgrounds Annexation Area as requested by previous resolution of the council. Resolution R-240409 includes the recommended plan of services for the annexation area as reviewed by the Planning Commission. This resolution sets a date for a public hearing for council action on the annexation by owner consent and plan of services for the regularly scheduled city council meeting on June 6, 2024. Resolution R-240409 further stipulates public notice requirements of Tennessee annexation law. Following up the public hearing, city council may adopt an annexation by owner consent resolution and the territory is immediately annexed into the city of Cookeville. Recommend your approval of the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji, second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven D, consider resolution R-240410, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city by owner consent and approving a plan of service for the Nelson North Drive Annexation Area located 1975 and 1985 North Drive, further identified as tax map 039 parcel 070.00. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, the Planning Commission has reviewed and made a recommendation on an annexation by owner consent request and plan of services for the Nelson North Drive Annexation Area as authorized by a previous resolution of the council. Resolution R-240410 includes the recommended plan of services of the annexation area as reviewed by the Planning Commission. The resolution sets a date for a public hearing and council action on the annexation by owner consent and plan of services for the June 6, 2024 city council meeting. The resolution further stipulates public notice requirements in Tennessee annexation law. Again, following a public hearing, the council may adopt an annexation by owner consent resolution and the territory is immediately annexed into the city limits of the city of Cookeville. Happy to answer any questions, but I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
I'd just like to note that the senators who are on that, they'll will have to pay the tap fees.
That is included in the plan of services and I will, I would present that specifically at a public hearing for the resolution to annex. But that is, it would be subject to tap fees. And further, the Water Quality Control Department stipulated that no additional units would be approved on this parcel. There's currently 12 multifamily units on the subject property until such time that sewer capacities were adequate in the sewer basin.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven E, consider authorizing AT&amp;T FirstNet solution as the data service plan providing, provider for the police department's mobile communication terminals utilizing the statewide contract 911. Is that on purpose?
I beg pardon?
The contract number's 911.
It is.
Okay. Patrick Winfrey, sorry, I just noticed that.
Uh, Mayor and council, we're asking the city to accept the new contract for the FirstNet AT&amp;T broadband service, which is on the statewide contract. The FirstNet, FirstNet network is a high-speed broadband network exclusively for first responders. This network provides connectivity of the MCTs, which are mobile computer terminals, in our patrol cars and several camera systems. As you stated, the FirstNet falls under Tennessee statewide contract number R-911. The life of the contract runs from November 9th, 2023 to November 9th, 2026, with two renewal options of 12 months each. The cost of service for each line is $43.24 per month, which includes fees and surcharges. We currently utilize 77 devices, which brings the total cost to approximately $40,000 per year. This is a budgeted item and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Come in.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Walker. Any discussion from the public on this agenda item? Discussion from council?
It was brought up in our meeting, but this is a kind of a dedicated network to first responders.
Yes.
It's part of that and it's a major benefit using the FirstNet program.
Yes, so it doesn't throttle down if you get a lot of data traffic.
Especially in times of emergency when everybody's probably calling their loved ones and checking on people. You need that connection still.
Yeah, it's exclusively for first responders.
Yeah. So you don't experience, you could be using the same tower but not experience the same congestion as other people using the same tower.
Correct. There is a separate band, I think it's band 14, that is dedicated toward the.
Any other discussion? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven F, consider approval to purchase school zone flasher system time switches. Ms. Mayor Beth Elrod.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is for our Transportation Traffic Signal Division and we would like you to consider purchasing 20 school zone flasher system time switches. This will update our current RTC manual switches to wireless cell-served switches that we can program wirelessly from our office with computers and will not require programming manually in the field twice a year. We can also program the entire school year into this and also adjust for early release days such as snow days. And so the purchase price of these 20 new switches is $35,000, $34,760 and I respectfully ask your approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, do I have a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
I just want to say I appreciate these. I was a school traffic guard for many years and every time school would be let out and these things weren't on and everybody just flying by and I'd have to dodge a car or two. So for safety reasons, I really appreciate this going for them especially and for the individuals driving because they slam on their brakes a lot not to hit somebody, so I appreciate it.
Any more discussion?
I think it'd be really helpful to the public now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead. Was there? Didn't hear you. I told him, didn't.
I just appreciate this for the public. I think it'll be a real advantage for everybody to kind of see those things and not have to try to dictate. School lets out early, there's times that this will enable us to have flashing lights out.
Quickly change it from one place instead of manually.
And just one more compliment to, as we're modernizing our infrastructure plan and updating and I think we've got more to talk about after this, but well done.
Wireless.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider approval to purchase traffic controller and monitor sole source provider. Ms. Elrod.
So this is for our traffic signal controllers and monitors. We are going to purchase eight controllers and 11 monitors and we plan to install these within the Jackson Corridor to improve eight intersections. This will also bring the current controllers and monitors that we use up to fiber and remote access for remote controlling of and updating the traffic signals in the Jackson Corridor. The purchase price of these monitors and controllers is $42,809. This was included in our budget for the year and we respectfully ask your approval of this purchase and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge, second by Councilman Baji. Any discussion from the public on this item? Discussion from council?
Now, just to clarify, this right here is replacing old equipment that don't, doesn't really have interface capabilities.
Yes.
And I think our long-term plan is to be able to real-time move traffic through intersections and things like this and this is kind of the core component that we need.
This will help us get more data from the new cameras we're looking at for the next fiscal year. We do have one camera in place that we are using and we currently cannot get all of the data that that camera collects because we need to update the controller. So we will update that controller and see all of the extra data the camera we have in place will provide.
Anything else?
How quickly can you get this implemented?
Uh, I think we can get it in before the end of June and so we will hopefully, hopefully it's just a switch out of like a computer system, so one day.
Great.
And start getting extra data from this camera.
Great.
All right, let's take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven H, consider awarding bid for cleaning services. Mr. Turner.
Mayor and members of the council, this bid is for cleaning of our warehouse facility as well as public works facility. We took bids, received five bids and best evaluated bid is American Facility Services at $1,425 a month for the water quality building and $1,385 for public works and I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council?
Has any of our facilities used this group before?
No.
Are they local?
They're, they have some local people there. They cover about 14 states, I think it is. They have sort of a head, headquarters type group in Nashville.
Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven I, consider approval of change order number two for 2022 Tennessee Tech Campus WL relocation project. Mr. Turner. Whoa, sorry.
Mayor and members of council, this is a project out of Tennessee Tech where we did relocate some water lines. The original contract, we did a change order the day that we awarded the bid and dropped it down to $793,000. This change order reduces it by another $101,000 and some change. The final contract price would be $691,817.06. This adjusted some quantities, took out some work and they were able to do some paving and sidewalk that Tech had in another projects, so the timing worked out to where they didn't have to do all that in there. And I should point out too that this, this project was paid by Tennessee Tech.
I do have a motion.
Some moved.
Motion made by Councilman Baji. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, take a vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven J, consider approval of change order number one for 2022 Low Pressure Sewer System Sewer Project. Excuse me, Mr. Turner.
This project, like the first one, is finished and ready to close out, so we've got this change order final balance. The original contract was $398,430. This takes off $29,446. Part of this is credit for $9,000 for administration inspection work that we did after the original contract date and this moves the new contract date to March the 15th, 2024, the date that he reached substantial completion. I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Some moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilbert. Any discussion from the public? Discussion from council? Okay, all vote.
All votes correct. Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance O-240405, an amendment to the zoning code relative to methadone clinics in the medical service MS zoning district. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. In the current zoning code, methadone clinics or similar treatment facilities are allowed as a use permitted upon appeal. That's a special exception in the MS Medical Services Zoning District, subject to a public hearing and approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals, further subject to standards established by ordinance O-050608. These standards are, these uses shall not be located closer than 1,500 feet as measured from the nearest property line to the nearest property line from an existing property used or zoned for residential purposes, shall not be located closer than 1,500 feet from any school, childcare facility, public playground, public park, or church, or similar place of worship, shall not be located on a street with a classification of less than major collector status. Mr. Paul Tribbett, on behalf of Cedar Recovery, submitted a request to amend the zoning code relative to methadone clinics within the MS zone. Cedar Recovery is an addiction treatment clinic that is currently located at 1225 South Willow Avenue. They offer counseling and medication assisted treatment services to treat opioid addiction. The petitioner requested consideration for an amendment to the zoning code to permit an opioid treatment program dispensing or administering methadone for the treatment of opioid use disorder as a use permitted by right in the MS Medical Service District. This would eliminate the need for a public hearing and Board of Zoning Appeals approval. The petitioner also included conditions for methadone clinics as follows. The owner of the property or authorization agent of the property has obtained a certificate of need from the state of Tennessee to operate a non-residential, non-residential substitution-based treatment facility for opioid addiction. It shall not be located closer than 500 feet as measured from the nearest property line to nearest property line from an existing property zone for single-family residential purposes, shall not be located closer than 500 feet from any existing school, childcare facility, public playground, or park. The Plank Division consulted with city legal staff relative to this requested amendment and staff recommended revision to the zoning code. These revisions included adding a definition in section 202, Construction of Language and Definitions, to define a new use as regional medical services. This would be defined as any non-institutional facility in an office environment or solo group, solo, of solo or group practice providing outpatient surgical, medical, dental, chiropractic, optical, osteopathic, diagnostic, and similar services for humans by physicians, dentists, and other healthcare practitioners that anticipate serving more than 150 patients per day or which dispenses controlled substances for use on-site or which provides minor surgical procedures that involve the use of any general or regional anesthetic. In addition, the use includes any facility or use for which a certificate of need from the state of Tennessee is required for operation. The proposed amendment would delete our current The proposed amendment would delete our current provisions for methadone clinics established by ordinance O-050608. The amendment would also add conditions for regional medical concern, regional, regional medical services as a use permitted upon appeal, a special exception in the MS Medical Services zoning district, subject to a public hearing and approval of the Board of Zoning Appeals, meeting these conditions. If a certificate of need is required from the state of Tennessee for the proposed use, the property owner or authorized agent shall obtain a certificate of need to operate the facility as a condition of Board of Zoning Appeals approval. The facility shall be fully licensed with the appropriate federal or state agency if required. The facility shall be located on a street of no less than major arterial classification. All activities shall be conducted within the building, and adequate indoor waiting areas shall be provided. No outdoor waiting is permitted. The indoor waiting area shall be open to all patients 30 minutes prior to the patients being seen. The facility shall post a conspicuous sign stating that loitering is prohibited on the property. The petitioner shall provide the Board of Zoning Appeals with information regarding the number of staff. The petitioner shall provide the name and phone number of the community relations contact who, who will respond to concerned, concerns and complaints. And the facility shall not be located adjacent to a district zoned RS 20, RS 15, RS 10, RS 7.5, RS 5, or RD, or any property used for residential purposes unless separated by a public street as shown on the official street map. This amendment, as I said, was reviewed by our city's legal staff, and the, the proposed changes have been approved by the Planning Commission as recommended by the Planning Division. I recommend approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you. Is there a motion? We'll have a motion in a second, and then we'll open it for public hearing, yes. Is there, so do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Eldridge. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second from Councilman Walker. At this time, we will open the public hearing portion of the meeting. If anyone would like to step up and speak on this agenda item, please come to the podium. If you'll say your name, live in the city or county, we give you three minutes if you respect that time, and we will open the public hearing portion.
Hello, my name's Dennis Wittenberg. I live in Baxter. I had two years' experience working in a methadone clinic in Milwaukee. It was the southeast Wisconsin for the whole southeast. I was in the med room for two years, and you don't know what you're getting into with this. Drug addicts as a group, I've got some stuff from the National Library of Medicine, which is pretty well, close relationship between drug abuse and crime. Drug abusers commit crimes to pay for their drugs, and this inflicts damages to the society. Moreover, many criminals are under the influence of drugs while committing crimes. Drug trafficking is another outcome of drug use. So, then it's got numbers, just numbers and numbers of which drug users, you commit what type of crimes, you can have it if you want it, but... The end of it all is, there's a direct relationship between the level of drug abuse and the type of drug committed crimes. With increased drug abuse delinquency rate and intensity increased, addicts are forced to commit crime to acquire drugs because addicts are not hired. As a result, they don't have an income to fulfill their needs. That's why they turn to illegal activities such as smuggling, drug dealing, theft, and prostitution. Thus, the cycle of poverty, addiction, and crime is repeated. So, the last statistic before I finish is, in fact, 85% of individuals relapse within a year of treatment. According to the National Institute of Drug Abuse, moreover, 2/3 of individuals return to drug use within weeks of beginning addiction treatment. I saw this firsthand, and what it is, is it brings the community of drug addicts in, fencing of product, prostitution, dealing drugs. When you start giving drugs away, you bring in drug addicts, and they don't work, they don't, they're thirsty. Most of the people we had in our clinic came in to beat a rap from a court case. It'd be a prostitute, a thief, whatever, and the judge will say, well, if you go for treatment, we'll, we'll stay your commitment. It, it was just, it was a revolving circus. It was just a sad thing to see, but the worst part is what happens to your community when you bring in outside drug addicts who are then going to live there so they can get the drugs. You really need to look at this. 100 feet, 500 feet, 1,500 feet, don't want it anywhere near my children. I, you know, it's, you just don't comprehend this group of people we're talking about. And the people who we dealt with who were in the clinic, the people, they make money. It's money, it's just money, all it is is money. So, I'm not used to speaking in public, but I hope you got what this is all about and the type of people you're going to be bringing into your community, which I don't think you understand how bad they are.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Do you have anyone else who would like to speak?
I live in the county. I'm a retired chemist. And I admit, it's been 20 more years or so since I've had biochemistry, but it's my understanding that meth works on some of the same receptors as opioids do. So basically, you're trading one addictive drug for another addictive drug with this strategy. I have a basic philosophical problem with that. I can appreciate the legal niceties that you're facing with this issue, understand that the previous ordinance would have been considered exclusionary zoning. I realize there are legal issues with that, but I would implore the city council to think long and hard about this ordinance, and just do what is right for the community, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else who'd like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Paul Tribbett, I do not live in the city of Cookeville. We do have a facility here at 1225 South Willow Avenue, as Mr. Ward stated earlier. It's no secret, we've been, for over the last year, we've been seeking to open an opioid treatment program in the highest needed area in the state of Tennessee, and that is here in the city of Cookeville. It may no secret about it, we've not attempted to try to hide it in any way. The city commission clearly cares about people not being treated disparately among other people trying to seek help for disease processes, and so I appreciate your consideration in this amendment. We've been here for almost two years. We're an existing community partner. We're the exclusive provider of treatment for the day reporting center here in the city of Cookeville. We're part of the Upper Cumberland Human Resource Agency's Recovery Project, Recovery Connect Project. We're partnering with the hospital. We're doing things like that to be in the community. In fact, to demonstrate this, we were just awarded a certificate of need in Knoxville by, on March 27th, by the Certificate of Need Board. We had 17 letters of support, two state senators, the University of Tennessee Hospital, the most arguably respected drug court judge in the entire state, potentially the country since he was awarded that award by the United States Supreme Court in 2018, Middle Tennessee State University, just to name a few of the 17, all wrote letters in our support. Our only opposition was the company that owns two of them that are located there. So, we've been a trusted partner. We're a car-credit agencies. We've identified a property that we would love to make an application for a certificate of need to see if the state agrees that there should be an opioid treatment program here. That's located at 201 North Oak Avenue. We have a lease in hand that we could sign today. It is contingent upon us getting a certificate of need upon approval for the correct zoning and license and things like that, multiple steps in this process. It's already zoned medical services, it's about 1,500 feet, actually 1,000 feet from the hospital, but it's not located on an arterial roadway. When I reached out to Mr. Ward and asked him, why do we increase it from collector to arterial SAS, he said, because that there may be an increase in traffic. Well, the hospital's treating more than 150 to 200 patients per day. In fact, I saw on the road counter that was on the public website, there's thousands of cars coming through on, on a minor collector road, and so that's just one above a local street. So it's difficult for me to sit here and say that that equates to the same thing when a hospital is not located on a major arterial roadway. Can't think of a better location than 201 North Oak Avenue, right next to the hospital, right where other medical services zoning is for us to make this application. I think that if you look at other cities such as Maryville, Mount Juliet, Morristown, that are similar size to this, you can see that Mount Juliet and Maryville don't have any zoning restrictions against these types of facilities. Morristown has everything listed in here with the exception of one thing, the arterial roadway. In light of that, I would ask the commission and the council to consider an amendment to what you have in front of you. Where it says that it must be located on arterial roadway, I would ask that you would add an or located within 1,000 feet of a hospital, or within 1,500 feet of an arterial roadway, because that is where this property will be located. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. Elijah Willis, the director at Next Step for Life, Cookeville resident, my entire life. Everything you all have talked about up to this point has been for the benefit of this community. So if you're going from the benefit of this community, and that's what you're really sitting in these seats for, you'll fight like hell to keep this hell out of Cookeville. You have no idea what you're about to open up. People are going to travel far and wide. I used to be one of them. Not, I didn't go to Knoxville, it wasn't Chattanooga like they said last time. Maryville, me and five people in a four-seater car, we go to Maryville once a month to make our $3,000 so we could stick it in our arms. That's all that's going to happen. This, this, it's a revolving door. It's drugs. My sister-in-law is in the hospital right now in Louisiana, coming off of this junk, trying to really get help. She's in Teen Challenge. That's what help looks like. It's laying down your flesh, not feeding it with chemicals. You have no idea what you're opening up, the people that are crossing from Georgia to Kentucky, they're all going to be coming to Cookeville to make their money. That's all this is about, and if you're trying to benefit our community, you're not going to open this up. And I understand, I don't understand, actually, I have no idea what the legal stuff on the back end looks like and what you're facing, but I would fight tooth and nail, as dirty as I had to get, to keep this out of Cookeville. You have no idea. The people that are living in car, I lived in a car, they didn't even run for six months before I finally said, I'm, I'm done doing this, I'm going to go get help. I run a program. People that are coming out of South Maple or over here on Willow, coming out of New Leaf, coming out of getting detoxed, they come to us because it doesn't work. The world hated Jesus, too. I'll leave it at that. Sin is sin, and this is sin. It's not helping anybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
My name is Penny Cole, and I live in Putnam County all my life. I thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for your service to and oversight for the safety and well-being of the people of Cookeville. I also struggled with addiction for 20 years of my life, and am strongly opposed to even having a methadone clinic in Cookeville, and more so opposed to trading one drug for another, especially one as addictive and stronger and even deadly, more deadly than the opiates that it's designed to replace. The withdrawals are equally as terrible. I used methadone nearing the end of my addiction, and then onto SubuTeq, where I became functioning again and believing I was fine. In October of 2012, under the influence, I was involved in a car accident where I fell asleep during, and crossed over into oncoming traffic, had a head-on collision with another vehicle. In that vehicle, a grandmother, a mother, and a daughter. The grandmother was killed, and two others injured, and me. There are other alternative programs in Cookeville that are faith-based and promote total abstinence from chemicals, where people can encounter truth, the power of the gospel of Jesus, and learn who they are and their purpose, and truly recover and be restored to productive members of society. Because people who visit a methadone clinic are not really seeking help, but means to an end for that day and to not be sick, or to sell their medicine, and the desperation of not having this drug compels crime and violent crime. My prayer in sharing this story is to help you make decisions that provide real recovery to people who need and want it, and maybe lives can be saved, and no others have to be lost on our watch. I can't take back what happened to me, what I did, but if one could be saved. And one more thing, today I was led to look up the meaning of the word "methadone" in Hebrew. Meth meaning death, and adon from the word Adonai meaning lord, where we get, so it's, it's death lord is what that word means, and this gave me chills. I'm praying for all of you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, councilman, I'm Stephen Lloyd. I'm the medical director at Cedar Recovery. I'm in recovery myself, have been for almost 20 years, and I get the concerns, very difficult drug, very difficult topic. I'll address the trading one drug for another thing. That's not true. It's just not. If you're trading one drug for another, you'd have 100% retention rate. We don't have anywhere near that. I would pray for it, but we don't have that. And it's about getting people out of the cycle that they're in. The gentleman stood up and talked about patients that he traveled with and what they did. Well, that's his group. That's not every group, and we can do this in any field of medicine, it doesn't matter. And he talked about the failures. That's what people point at. There's a lot of success stories. Methadone and drugs like methadone, and by the way, it's not meth, it's not methamphetamine, it is an opioid, and the receptors it acts on are the exact same receptors in the brain that heroin acts on. It's also the same receptors that the naturally occurring opioids act on, like endorphins and kelpins that are released when we fall in love or we watch our kids play games. So there's nothing special about what the chemist gentleman said whatsoever. And drug is not methamphetamine, it is methadone. It's a hard drug. It is a drug that 10 years ago I thought would be out because we had better medications to help people. The truth is, is that fentanyl has changed the ballgame, and now the kids die, and they die quickly. The one gentleman pointed out the failures. He's got failures in his own program, too. I'll guarantee you, if he doesn't, he's lying, because there's failures in every program. I wish success for their programs. I came out of a 12-step program, I still go today, and it worked for me, but what works for me may not work for everybody else. And as far as bringing quote drug addicts, I don't use those terms, they're unbelievably derogatory, but at any rate, as far as bringing people with addiction issues into Cookeville and Putnam County, I got news for you, you already know this, they're already here. And so we're talking about providing this in a way that helps them find a path to meaningful recovery. It's not a sin, it's not trading one drug for another, and it's about providing help for the people of Putnam County and surrounding areas that need it without driving long distances, and that's a fact. And we want to work with our community. I hope we could work with the people here, because we don't come in any other way. We didn't come in here clandestinely and open up a shop without telling anybody. We've been upfront with what we want to do the whole time, and we still do. I wake up every morning with one mission, and that mission is to help as many people find recovery as humanly possible today, and I think I did that today. Hopefully, I can do it again tomorrow. Methadone is a tool, it is not the answer, but it'll keep cravings at bay and hopefully keep some of these kids alive long enough that some of the behavioral changes that needs to happen can happen, and they can find a path to recovery in what some of the other people in this room have found. Thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting and now open up for council discussion.
Go ahead. I'll go first. Go ahead.
I'll wait on you this time.
I'm sorry, Jeff. Just trying to capture what we're, we're changing in ordinance. I know there's been some narrative about, you know, different positions inside, but right now we have an existing ordinance, and we're wanting to amend that. That's the matter at hand, right?
Yes, we have an existing ordinance that establishes standards for methadone clinics, and I, you know, I reviewed that with council on an earlier slide. This proposed ordinance would amend our zoning ordinance, it would delete those current provisions, and we would establish standards for regional medical uses. So we have defined that use, as I went over with council, and then we have added some conditions that that, some conditions for approving that use at specific locations.
And the reason, the catalyst for this need to amend is, is just a request, or is there a deeper necessity, or?
When the request in the application, there were, there were references to our current ordinance being in violation of Americans with Disabilities Act requirements and Recovery Act, the RA Act, which are federal acts, and we reviewed those provisions with our city attorney, and we have recommended that we make a change based on, you know, the, the claims that were made of our, of our current ordinance. And Mr. Rager may have more to add here. I don't, I saw you kind of scooting up, Danny, if you have something to add, you, you can... we make a change based on, you know, the claims that were made of our current ordinance. And Mr. Rader may have more to add here, I don't know, I saw you kind of scooting up, Danny, if you have something to add, you can.
No, I think what Mr. Ward said is exactly right. We had some issues that were criticized with the application to change the ordinance, and we looked at those carefully, looked at some case law on it, and decided that it was appropriate to make some changes. We worked to make broader changes and create this new broader use, the regional medical services use with the restrictions that are appropriate to this broader use, considering things like traffic and other issues that relate to these broader uses. And the planning commissioner reviewed this, and believed that this was the right thing to do, to correct the deficiencies we had, and to find a path forward for the city of Cookeville.
So for me, you know, that is, just getting it out there, that is more compelling to me. I trust your gen, I don't know you, but I trust your intents. I'm slow to trust the outcome of this. And that's why I'm focusing on, trying to focus on the matter at hand. And that's helpful. Couple things, just specifics about the proposed ordinance. Is 500 better than 1,500, or some of the, I'm slow to change things that, you know, have been already embedded in our ordinance for years.
Well, there is no, there are no distance requirements, there are adjacent standards, you know, adjacent to residential properties. That's one of the things that Mr. Rader had provided in some of his case law research, where those distance standards were problems in other ordinances across the country.
I think the 500 was the request from Cedar.
That was Cedar Recovery's requested amendment, but the amendment was modified by the planning commission.
And that group's amendment was probably targeted towards what they wanted to do and where they wanted to use it. What we're looking at for the city of Cookeville is, what's the best thing for the city of Cookeville with respect to not just this huge methadone clinic, but broader uses with the same kind of traffic and other things like that? Because the law doesn't allow us, doesn't allow the city to discriminate against methadone clinics as a use under the ADA or the RA. And both the city can have, and should have, broad restrictions on high-traffic volume issues for distributors of controlled substances. In this case, with respect to methadone specifically, that's not really what this change is about, but with respect to methadone specifically. It's my understanding that a certificate of need is required, I understand the gentleman said that they just got one in Knoxville. That's a process that you go through with the state of Tennessee, and there's a hearing for it. You have to demonstrate that there's a need for this type of use in this community. Same if you wanted to open an emergency room, a standalone emergency room, or you wanted to open a new hospital in the community, you have to go get that certificate of need. And there's a lengthy hearing process, and that organization would need to go through that process, as would any other type of organization in the city of Cookeville that requires a certificate of need to operate. They need to go get that first, before they come to Cookeville and ask to open a facility here, any kind of.
And that goes to public notice, that puts everyone on notice.
That's right. And it should be published in the Herald Citizen and the classified, the legal notices for those of us who look at those.
Who does it?
Yeah.
The only other question I had marked is about the 500 feet, that was why, I mean, is that something you?
The 500 feet was what they requested, we did not include that in the proposed amendment. That is part of the request to the planning.
I appreciate it. Councilman Gilbert, I did present what the petitioner had provided in their application, but that was not what was recommended by the planning commission.
And then just as a, you know, point of order down in your planning role, you know, how do, once a facility is in place, the adjacent agency to RS, if an RS came in after that?
It would be legal non-conforming.
Gotcha.
So it would have to meet the criteria established, it would have to meet the current criteria to be, you know, to be permitted at the location, and any changes that happen are protected by state law, 137208, and that determines non-conformities. If it's a legal non-conforming use, it's protected, it has rights to continue and expand per Tennessee statute.
Catching up?
Okay.
Give me just a second.
Let you go.
He's answered some of my stuff, so.
Elijah, anything?
Well, it looks like these changes are actually allowing broader uses for these types of facilities regardless, not limiting to or excluding methadone. You know, they meet this medical, regional medical services criteria, they just follow the same process, and they're allowed, correct?
That's right. If any use meets this criteria, is a broader definition, they're allowed to operate in Cookeville. And we're not, the city is not singling out methadone clinics, and that's what the ordinance used to do, but probably was not proper. So now we've got a broader definition, then it captures a large number of uses. That might face the same kind of difficulty such as traffic, as the gentleman said, I think Morristown has similar restrictions. Planning department looked at this carefully to try to be sure that this agrees with the zoning plan, the planning commission's approved it. You know, I've worked with them to try to craft this and recommend it. I think it's probably the best path forward for the city.
The use is allowed as permitted upon appeal, so it would require Board of Zoning Appeals' approval, but if you meet the conditions established by the zoning code, the use should be approved by the BCA. But it still requires that next step. It's not a use by right, and the petitioner had requested that. We recommended to maintain it as a use permitted on appeal. It's a special exception, it requires a public hearing and BCA consideration. And the Board of Zoning Appeals would review that they have made those, met those conditions, and if the conditions are met, it should be approved by the board.
I see the need for having zoning in place, for the same reason that you want to protect your house from other zoning options coming in next door. A lack of zoning, and a lack of these type of changes in an ordinance, means that things can find their way in that you didn't expect. And so I think, looking at this broadly for different uses and requiring these things, gives us an opportunity to evaluate what it is coming in, what are our options in the future on stopping that, and how we can prevent that in the future if this was to come to Aside from voting on this, in regards to the talking about methadone that was presented, I have a hard time reconciling the methadone treatment in our area. We are not Knoxville, or Nashville, or a large city, we are a smaller city. We have a population of closer to 50,000, whereas they have a population of 200. Our county has a population closer, little less than 100,000, where they have half a million in just that county. They're surrounded by larger cities, that all exceed our population. You know, I don't feel like Cookeville is the right place for that, but I do think it's important for us to have the correct broad definitions in zoning, and move forward to ensure that we are applying to federal law, and ensure that our zoning code is correct. And we can address those issues when they come to bay. But right now, I think this is important, to get this zoning taken care of, and make sure the city has proper zoning. And that's a different discussion than methadone clinics.
And I'll agree, yeah, this is an issue that we're voting on now, is on the zoning. Our zoning was, our zoning was too restrictive and discriminatory, and as a city, we cannot do that. And so we, you know, tasked the planning commission with taking a look at finding a way to make sure that we're not doing that. And so I appreciate all the work that they did with that. You know, I'm a clinician, I'm a nurse practitioner, as well as a mayor, so my nurse practitioner side of me appreciates having companies like Cedar Recovery here, trying to help with the addiction problem, because like Dr. Lloyd said, it's here. If we want to say it's not here, then we're relying to ourselves. It is here. I hear numerous times of talking about how many more doses of Narcan we have to give now to our overdose patients. It's not one or two doses, it's three or four doses now, because there is such a level of tolerance with drug abuse now. So I appreciate anyone who is willing to come into your next steps as well, willing to come in and try to help with the addiction process and recovery that we have here, because it's real. And one recovery, or one treatment option doesn't work for everyone, I know that as a healthcare provider, so I appreciate anyone trying to come in and help with our addiction problem, because it is real. And so that's my stance on methadone and treatment, and treatment of all kinds. I'm for all of it. But you know, the matter at hand is voting on this zoning ordinance, and making it in a way that we are not being discriminatory, and this, I feel like accomplishes that task that we need to accomplish.
Yeah, I appreciate the zoning and all the hard work that's winning, because I agree with everything that's said about zoning. One of the things, I've worked with mental health, substance abuse, all that for over a decade. That's the thing I've done, I've worked with, I've worked with Next Step, I've worked with This is Living Ministries, Teen Challenge, I've worked with Mr. Will Roberts sitting right here now, with Rescue Mission, and I've worked in all this, and I get it and understand it, and I've met with you guys and talked with you. A lot of things, there's a lot of things I do appreciate about Cedar Recovery, but one of the things, after meditating on it a lot more, and thinking about it, and talking with other individuals, and just getting to understand it a lot better than what I already did, and my concern, couple of things that I have, just as somebody who's dealt with it for so long, is that, number one, you got, so with what's gonna go on, one thing we've got to be mindful of, you give it to them daily, right? They come there daily and get it, right? And our concern is, our thought, your thought process behind that is, well, if you give it to them daily, then they're not gonna go to Nashville and get it, they're gonna stay here and get it, right? Is that, they're not gonna go to Nashville and get the packs and do all that, is that? Right? My thinking is, they're gonna stay with Nashville, they're gonna stay there, they're gonna stay there and continue to do those things, because why would you go off that? Especially if you're like what he said, to go sell it, to go.
How long do you have to get it daily before they just start prescribing it? Are we allowed to speak freely?
No, yeah, we can have that discussion. I do know, if that's a question that, do you have that question?
Yeah, I do have that.
Then we can ask, yeah, we can, yeah.
Because I can't remember what you told them.
Yeah, Dr. Lloyd, if that's a question you have to ask him, yes.
Yeah, Dr. Lloyd, I can't remember what you said.
Yeah, it's gonna vary, the feds put out rules, or they just relaxed them, so they relaxed them after COVID, because they saw when you had take homes early on, you really didn't have the downside. Personally, I don't believe in that. When people come in at first, they're in bad shape. Seeing them every day is a really good thing. So we, in Knoxville, when we get our clinic open there, we'll stick to what the state does right now. So they'll have to come, you know, for six months, they'll have to be.
Before they take one home.
Yeah, and they'll have to be, you know, and it's one of the things about medication, there's no magic bullet. I wish there was, man, if there was a pill we could give somebody to get them in recovery, it'd be great. Recovery's hard work. And so it's just a tool, and that tool will allow them to stay alive while you work on the big side of it, which is behavioral change and really spirituality.
My other question, is the sheriff's department gonna allow you to come in and work with them?
Oh boy, I hope so, you know.
Have you talked with them?
We've made every effort, we haven't had a lot of success with the sheriff here in Putnam County, you know, but we'll keep trying, we don't give up. We've worked in multiple other counties, not only sheriffs, but jails and judges. So we have jail programs that are ongoing currently.
Yeah, well, again, that's some of my concern, if they're not working with them, and they're... Again, I have a hard time wondering and concern, my concern is, I don't think they're gonna give up Nashville, Chattanooga, Knoxville to focus on this, I think they're gonna continue to go to those areas, get the packs, bring them back, do what they do. And that's one thing I just don't, I can't get with.
If somebody has to come in every day, they can't have a job.
Yeah, we're having, we're having, yeah, we're having council discussion right now, if you'll let us, yeah. We've had the public here, we've had, we asked him a question.
Why did I ask you my question? Well, no, that's just some of my concerns, and again, I do understand we do need to assist and help people, keep them alive long, I get that, but my thing, I wish this was inpatient, long-term inpatient? I wish it was like that, and they would taper off and not continue to do that, I don't think that's the model. And that's one thing I don't, I just, that's one of the issues and struggles I have, because I would like to see people get off of it like they do with Will Roberts, or Life, This is Living Ministries, or Teen Challenge. They get off this, and they are, I have a hard time too with people sometimes being said, you know, I'm recovered, I'm still in recovery. At some point, we get healed. And that's my, that's my conviction. That's my thing, I get healed from something. Like I had a cut on my hand, I get healed from it, I'm not recovered, I'm not recovered from something that happened. I think eventually you get healed from something. And that's your past, yes, and that's what you come out of, and I get that and understand that. And everybody's different in that, and that's fine. But I have a hard time seeing the full picture, and I appreciate what you guys do, and we've talked, and I get it. But I wish it was all in, it was a 30 to 90-day intern, or, you know, I know you've talked about what you've went to, and the program that helped you, that's the program that I would love to see happen, right? It's a $50,000 program. That's a program I would love to see happen, something like that, but this is hard for me. After much thought, and much thinking, and listening, and hearing everything, it is hard for me.
Any comments?
Just for one last summary, we've heard you, and for you or folks watching, we are not voting for methadone clinics. We are, and we've had similar issues before, we are amending, we're improving an ordinance that we are being compelled to do.
Yeah, I'd like to echo that, Chad.
That's what we're voting on right now, not voting for methadone clinics.
Yeah, I may make a comment later on how I feel about the rest of it, but right now I need to focus on zoning.
Right now we gotta focus on this ordinance.
But stick with me for five minutes, and I can comment on the rest.
So we've got motion and a second, we've had our public hearing, we've closed it, we've got the ordinance at hand, so we will go ahead and take a vote on the ordinance.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. At this time, that concludes the agenda portion of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the city council on any non-agenda items? Okay, any comments from council?
Yeah, I've got one on methadone clinics. I don't feel like it was, should be addressed to that zoning, because that's something different that we were doing, and so this is kind of outside of that scope. I don't feel like Cookeville's the right place for that type of treatment. Cookeville's a smaller hub community, we're not a big city. In 20 years from now, that may be a different discussion, but as of right now, I think Cookeville needs to worry about taking care of Cookeville, taking care of its surrounding partners. The idea that we become a regional hub for this, I don't think the community wants that. There's been a lot of discussion amongst us in the community, and I would just encourage you guys to hear that, from my perspective. I don't think this community wants a methadone clinic in its community. And I think that's an important thing to keep in mind, and that's, what I'm here to do is kind of be the voice of the people I've heard from. I've yet to hear from anybody outside your organization, saying they're really pushing hard, saying that, gosh, we need this. And, you know, I think it's just important to voice that, let you guys hear that. You certainly think that you guys are trying to do good work and have good intentions in what you do. However, I just don't think Cookeville is the right place for that. And so if that helps you guys focus on areas that have that need, I hope you can hear that and understand that, and we can kind of move forward on this, but that's where I stand.
Quick echo, well said, and for me, you know, this group, I've not been around a group that wants to do what's best in their mind for Cookeville more than this group. And for me, I don't want it, I've not heard anyone suggest they want it, and so those two summed up together, you know, Eric said it best, we appreciate your position, but please consider ours.
May I make a statement?
Well, we can, no, we've already passed a portion of agenda items, you can speak to us afterwards, though, if you'd like, yeah, that'd be fun, yeah, if you want to.
I'd like to echo what Eric said too. I have yet to, I've had conversations with a lot of people, and it's all, I have not heard of anyone supporting. heard of anyone supporting methadone clinic in this community. I don't think we're ready for it. I agree with you 100%.
That's what I was trying to say, yes. This is the point that I probably should have said, but that's okay. But I, I agree. I just have a hard time with some of the things I discussed earlier, even though I understand it, I understand I just have a hard time with, I don't think this is the right time and place.
But I do appreciate the work that you guys do. So I thank y'all currently for providing valuable service to our community.
And I would say I'm, I'm for treatment and treatment is treatment is treatment, no matter what form you get it in. And I'm for whatever helps our population and the drug problem that we have. And so that's, that's what I'm for. And people don't agree with what treatment they think is best, but as a healthcare provider,